That.
I'm making arrangements.
I'm getting ready to turn my hearing aids up so I can eavesdrop on you.
I'll talk to Joseph, I see him back there. I'm not going to make extra work for you.
Starting in two minutes, and yes, we are using the screen, so if you don't like craning your neck.
Two chairs.
Yeah, two chairs.
We open with Angela.
All right, well, it's three o'clock, so why don't we get started? Angela, do you mind getting us started?
Okay.
This is your show, really.
Okay, so I'll kind of walk you through the process of how we do this, because I know this is a couple people's first budget process. So first, we usually start with the CIP and the MRF. Really, today, we're focused on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project, and it gives you a chance to hear from the department heads on what they're requesting, and this is your budget, so you're able to give feedback on what is priority for you, and so we can make adjustments. Everything's kind of fluid until we get the operating budget done. So that will be part of the next steps, is working through the operating budget and tying the cash-funded projects, the bonded projects, all to the operating budget. So this is the first step. To kind of walk you through the packet, we have a list of the capital improvement projects for 2024. It also, to the right, has how we plan on funding those. And then the bottom part of that is the reserves, the things we fund annually. The next page is a five-year plan of the capital improvement projects, and I apologize that you didn't get these in advance. We've been a little bit on a crunch here. Next pages are descriptions of the projects, but you'll get to hear from department heads on them. And then the following pages are the MRF. This is our equipment needs. And so there's a few things we want to highlight on the MRF, but for the most part, department heads and finance and city manager are able to work out what we should fund for equipment and get that down to where it needs to be. It's a little bit higher than we'd like right now, but staff will work through that. We've started on it, and you can see where we've made some cuts, but central garage and staff will work through that. So we'll focus mainly on the CIP. I also want to thank department heads and some of their staff, because we did something different this year, since we don't have a city manager. We all got together, sat around a table, discussed our projects, and we were able to see that Woody Seat's probably going to take priority next year, getting that finished. So they were able to give up some of their projects, push them back. And so we were able to work together to come up with a really good draft of the CIP that I think we can possibly fund. We might have to cut a little bit here and there, but for the most part, I think it's pretty reasonable. So do you have any questions about that process?
No, but thank you for taking it upon yourself to work with department heads on figuring out a way to bridge the gap a little bit.
Yeah, it was actually their suggestion, and everyone involved really thought the process worked well and wanted to continue doing that in the future.
Angela, how does this compare to last year?
Okay, so like the main things that we're looking at are the general fund bonding column, which is at 7.1 million. That's doable. We could bond that, because we didn't bond as much in '23, so that's doable. It's a little bit more than we normally bond, but like I said, it's doable. Then the other thing we focus on is the general fund column. To the right, and down at the bottom, it says 1.5 million. That is higher than normal, so we might have to do a little bit of cutting there. Last year, I believe it was at 1.2 million, so we're not terribly far off. Just going to double-check that number. Yeah, last year it was 1.2 million, so we're close.
Did our councilman pay get into this year?
Did what?
We got cut.
It got cut, you're getting it.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah. Okay, so if you don't have any questions or comments about that, we can get started hearing from department heads. Chief Beer has called in, so we...
I mean, I'm brand new.
Yes.
So that's a 25% increase on general fund. I mean, so I would call that a fairly significant increase, not just a... But now, maybe that is just, maybe this thing fluctuates. This is my first meeting. Maybe it fluctuates from 1.8 to 1.2, 1.5 to 1.1. I don't know what...
It does fluctuate, and it does depend on the operating budget. If people are keeping their operating budgets relatively the same, then maybe we can afford that. If they're asking for a lot of increases in staff or other things, then we might have to cut it. Like I said, it's kind of a work-in-process, but there's also a few things on here that we can talk about to see if you want to cut or not.
I just...
Yeah.
It was 1.2 after we made adjustments and went back and forth and all that last year. We haven't started the project.
Yeah, this is a good starting point compared to last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last year, we were at 4 million at this point.
Are you serious?
Yeah, I'm serious.
Okay. I don't quite remember, but yeah. Is there anything else? Okay, Chief Beer, do you want to go for your projects? You can see the department in the second column of that sheet, so he'll be going over his fire projects.
Yes, sir, your fire station accredited cancer initiative, is that at a particular station? So it's a design that'll be used at all the other different stations?
Does doing that have any impact on like your liability insurance or anything like that? Or anything like that? Does it lessen your risk for some of those other things?
Yes, sir. On a scale of one to 10, how bad's the concrete that you want replaced? I can go look, if you'll tell me what direction to look. Okay, well... Thank you, chief.
I have a question on that. Has there been any damage to trucks or vehicles over the past, like, year or so because of the concrete?
Is there any... Justin, is there any way our crews can do that, or move forward that?
Without looking at it, I would think so. I don't know how big it is or anything, but if it's just flat work concrete, it's still rebarred in the...
Chief, is how much is that as concrete, not labor, this estimate? Would you be ejected if we get an S on concrete and then talk with you on that later?
Yeah, we can estimate the value of the concrete and steel that would be in it.
That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah, I would like to check on that. I know concrete is expensive, but let's take a look at it, see what we can do.
Hey, Chief Beer, do you have a feel for how many other fire departments in our area might have an accredited cancer initiative, what they've done with their own fire stations? Would we kind of stand apart in our department? Would we be kind of standing apart in our way of being proactive in regards to this cancer detox? I'm going to use my words wrong here, but I think you're going to understand what I'm saying, versus other departments in the region? Yeah, I was... Are you still there? Yes.
We lost you there for a minute, chief. Apparently, your cell signal on the lake is not good.
Can you still hear us? Maybe you got one on line, I don't know.
Chief, you're muted. If you...
Can you unmute him?
I can't. There he is. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I was more curious in regards to our ability in the region on showing them word.
A recruiting tool.
A recruiting tool, basically, thank you. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any more questions for Chief Beer? Should we move on to the next?
Thanks, chief.
Chief, I thank you for taking your time on your trip.
Do you want to go over police next?
Chief, would you like to? Oh, go ahead. Mike here did the budget this year, and it's his first year too. And I worked with him on it. He did most of it with Angela, so he's going to explain it. And we, I think they did an excellent job looking it over. There's only like one really project that's, and it's kind of forced on us to explain after you. So anyway, I'll let Mike have it for you.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Michael Collins. I'm the admin captain of the police department, who did that decision in February. The only CIP project we have is the elevator at the law enforcement center of the police department. There's two elevators located there, one down in the basement that goes up to the old jail. The evidence is still used for transporting prisoners over there to court. And then the lobby, front lobby elevator. We were, Chief Stuckline and I, had a meeting with the county maintenance supervisor, Harland Pugh Beck and Moore, and were informed that in 2024, they're going to be required to make some capital improvements on the elevators due to new state mandates, safety mandates. They were, one of the things that he described to us was part of the casing, I guess they're hydraulic elevators. It depends on, and I'm not, you know, don't know anything about elevators, but it had something to do with the casing. If they're capped on the bottom, you know, we're better off than if they're not. If they're not capped, they're running into issues with them leaking, and then the elevator's collapsing. We're informed then that the Bozen Plum elevators is who they got their initial estimate from. And the total project for both elevators is going to be about $300,000, which, as far as the lease agreement we have between the county and city for the police department, required to buy that equally between us and them, so it's going to be about $150,000. As far as our share for the elevators, that's going to include getting them up to the new mandates that the state's going to require, and then also a few improvements just on the looks up. But, you know, as far as being able to do a whole lot with it, you know, we're kind of mandated by the contract that we have with them that if they're going to, that's a state mandate, and then we're required to pay 50% of the contract.
Is the county know this, that they're going to have to pay $150,000?
Yes.
They seem to be okay with that?
Well, the way Harland described it was it's really not, we're not going to have a choice due to the new mandates, and yeah, he's, the way he talked is the initial estimate was at $300,000. And then, you know, once they actually bid it out, he said they'll bid it out for a county policy when the time comes. So who knows what the cost, you know, with the way that inflation's going. Hopefully, it won't be a whole lot more than that, but...
So is the county's responsibility for the maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we just share in the costs?
Yes.
Okay.
I think one of the things he said, it depends when they get out in there, the cylinder. Sometimes they put it in a case, down in the ground, sometimes they don't. He doesn't know which way it is, so it's a lot more expensive to have to go down there and beat down concrete, you know, the bottom of the pit and stuff, to get it out. So a lot of, a little bit of unknown there, but he still thought that was a pretty good estimate either way, so...
And I would imagine that it's inoperable while it's being worked on?
That would be my assumption. We didn't discuss that, but yeah, that would be my assumption. And I'm assuming they would just do, I don't know, maybe they'd tear them both out at one time, or if they would just tear one out and then work on the other one once it was complete.
Because they're not connected, like they're...
Yeah, and we really don't use the one down in the basement and down in the garage that often. I mean, it's mainly used by the county transport team. Even our transport team doesn't use it. They usually come around the front, because we miss one port right there, so they don't use it that often. You know, the main one we use is in the lobby, but unfortunately, with contract for stuff above that one.
Any more questions on that one?
Is this an operable building?
I don't believe so. Our end is, and the law enforcement center should be...
Building 71, cordoned and played out front, so...
If there's no more questions, Todd, do you want to talk IT?
Sure. The primary capital improvement project, got several MRF projects, but in 2018, we flew aerial photography. Basically, that's all the pictures that you see on every map that you get presented to you, and we use them, you know, 100 times a day throughout the city. The county approached me this year and wanted to do, update their aerial photography for the whole county. And so we are working with the county on the project for 2024. The city side of that, we've got $46,000 in a reserve account already for that, but the, it's going to be like $56,000, so we put $20,000 in the budget for this year, and then again in '29 to keep those updated. We generally do them every five years. This '24 will actually be year six. And like I said, between us and the county, it'll be 120-ish thousand for that. And those fly, leaf off, so we'll fly them in, you know, in February or March or something. That, we use that in all departments, including dispatch and, you know, inspections and IT and GIS and everything. So it's really important that those are up to date. And five years is our upper limit, and so we hopefully get that additional $20,000 through. Any questions on that?
That's done by plane?
Yes, those are done by plane. Now, we, starting in 2016 and now a lot more, we augment single projects with drones, and we fly aerial for a particular project, so we have up to date. Additionally, we re-flue downtown for that downtown study. So we target small areas, but flying the whole city or the whole 1,200 square miles of Reno County is not possible.
I was referring to the city and/or, from and/or satellite, I didn't just, I was just carrying...
So this, we will fly ours at three-inch pixels, which means every dot on the screen represents three inches in real space. The county's going to do six-inch pixels, so that's, you know, it's a lot cheaper to do that because it's not nearly as good a quality, but, and then we share ours with the county. So the incorporated part of the city, city limits plus all of fire, the fire district two is all done at three-inch pixels, which means that basically you can tell what a vehicle is, but you can't read the license plate. You know, that's that quality. Okay? Uh, other projects that we have, um, and they're on another screen. And actually, I don't have that screen up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about on this blue page, the uh, which is the MRF page. My projects are generally MRF. Uh, and I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna actually bring up a PowerPoint because it's I M I T and it's obligatory. Uh, I am required to do so. So, um, let me do that real quick. So enterprise asset management, basically what is that? Uh, because I M I T, I went and asked an A I what E I M is. And so if you want to do research on enterprise asset management, you're welcome to use Chat G P T. I've got a license if you need it. Uh, but basically, it's anything that's an asset that's not a human, uh, equipment, buildings, facilities. Uh, we want the ability to uh to be able to track it, uh, be able to do preventive maintenance on it. Be able to do repair orders, work order management on it, track its whole life lifecycle. And uh, you know, make sure it's performing up to the standards that we want and that we're, that the things that we have are compliant. That, uh, and, you know, so we we know how much they cost. That's inventory management and then the ability to work on it with uh remote. So uh, right now, our enterprise asset management system is um, is uh, we have a product called Lucity. Uh, let me go back to the presentation part. And that uh Lucity product is being used by um, by uh Public Works, Streets, uh Water Maintenance, Sewer Maintenance. And uh, the product that we have now is called Lucity. Uh, actually now it's called Central Square Asset Management. It's been sold twice. It, uh, the support is really poor at the moment. Our, the licensing is a, is a real mess. Uh, they keep trying to gouge us at every turn, and we need additional modules, and they're trying to charge us for those. So what we're hoping to do is is either replace Lucity or completely fix it. Uh, and um, we also wanna add uh the uh, the Park Department or facilities to it. And uh, and then also add the R O and Waste Order Treatment Plants to that system. At some point, we would like that to be an enterprise-wide system, so we would put like I T in it and um, and, you know, other kind of assets that we have. But that's really the, the police department kind of has their own asset management system, but Fire, Fire has their their own and they're sort of part of their um, their main management systems. But otherwise, everything else would be in that system. The reason I'm talking about it is because whenever you cross over departments, it be, it becomes not just a public works thing. It's also now a park thing, and it's also, you know, moving into facilities. So the uh, the idea is, is that we would use one product across across the enterprise. So uh, basically, this includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. Uh, that includes probably roughly fifty thousand dollars in annual licensing. Uh, what the expectation there is, is that we pay forty-six something now. And the companies that we've been, already been talking to have given us kind of that general price range for their annual cost. So from that standpoint, the the, it's gonna probably be close to a wash.
So Todd, you already own it now?
We, we have that Lucity product that I was talking about.
And so this is an additional?
This, this is, this, the idea would be to replace that or spend some money and repair it. Uh, so the other costs that we would have other than the annual licensing, which we already pay, are conversion of historical data. Right now, we have nineteen years of data in that system. Uh, unfortunately, can't really get the data back out. It's not, it doesn't have a decent reporting environment. Uh, so that's one of the things that we would like to be able to do, would be able to get data back out of it. But we, uh, so there's the conversion, implementation, training of of additional staff. Uh, integrations with other systems as such as C Click Fix or Fleet Fleet Software, Munis, uh, New World, those kind of systems. Uh, and then uh, part of that money would be assistance in gathering the information. Uh, during the Raftellus Report, uh, we, they, they observed that the uh, that uh Park Department needed a management system. And this would be that system. Uh, they do not have, uh, you know, basically everything they do right now is manual. And so we would need to gather all that information, you know. When was, when was the H VAC in City Hall built and what's the name of it and how do you replace this part and how much does it cost and all those kinds of things, which? So some of that information and in gathering and intrigue would be there. And then we also want to spend a little time and and energy and money to evaluate our processes and make sure that our, that we're using best practices, that that, um, you know, we're, we're doing as good as we can for for, for the, you know, for for what we're spending. So, and then of course, uh, huge expense, which is not included in that two hundred fifty thousand is staff time. Uh, we are already ramping up for this. Uh, we lost our G I S guy this time last year. And so we're getting ready to to hire somebody with the intention of working a lot on the enterprise asset management system, as well as the Assistant Park Director. Um, as, you know, she was hired with the idea that, you know, this would be a big project for her. And uh, and then of course Jacob is is uh, uh, you know, he's fully involved. As a matter of fact, at the moment Jacob is a process manager, or excuse me, the project manager for finding the the system that we wanna use. So there's a lot of legwork that that's already going into this, but gotta pay for it. So any questions?
Just the laptops that were, are in the trucks and Public Works?
It, well, they they use iPads and tablets and laptops and all kinds of things, so it's got a mobile capability. So when you're in the field, you'll be able to say, yes, I fixed that that pothole or or I repaired that traffic signal or whatever.
I used it when I worked here.
Yeah.
Very good system, yes.
How long, so spending the money now, how long do you think you would be using this particular program or system?
So our general idea is to never have to replace software, but we always do.
Right.
Uh, I've been here for twenty-five years and we've basically replaced everything once. Uh, in twenty seventeen, we replaced Munis and that was huge for us. It really made a big difference in how we do finance and budgeting. And that project was super successful, uh, most days. It's software, so everybody's gonna hate it at some point. So the idea would be another fifteen years or so. Uh, like I said, this system, which wasn't this system when it was born, uh, started uh twenty years ago.
And so we're currently using Lucity. Do you have a software in mind already?
We've already, we've been evaluating companies, uh, so we have a couple of of companies we think would work really well with the city. Uh, but we've, no decisions have been made. Yeah.
Still have a few more to evaluate.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, last thing, and I'm taking way too much time and I apologize for that, is uh, we would like to, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna show off a little bit. I hope you don't mind. Uh, back in um, back in twenty fourteen, the county decided to uh, to build a jail uh out by the animal shelter. And the, at, part of that was they were required to run their own fiber optics to the, to the jail from the courthouse. And at that time, we noticed that they were passing, this is actually B Street that you're seeing here. We, they were passed, they passed right by the I T building, uh, you know, just a block from, a block from here. And uh, we asked them if there's any way we could, we could, you know, join them in that process or put another fiber in that conduit. At that time, the K H P said, no, you've got to, you, it's got to be alone. You can't do anything else. Uh, nobody else can be in that conduit. And so that never made any sense to me because that's not the way fiber works, but it's like, whatever. So we, um, last year, we asked them again and we got a different answer. And the answer was, yes, you can put a new fiber in there. So what we wanna do is we want to run a fiber from the I T building around to the animal shelter and around the zoo and the, and the, you just saw the golf course, the, this is the Home Builders Shelter, uh, Salt City Splash. So this kind of orange line here uh also would go then around to the Park Building and end up at at um, and end up at Public Works. So we, we got an estimate for that, for somebody to do it for us, and they quoted us a million dollars. And obviously, we weren't interested in doing that process. So instead of doing that, we built a wireless wide area network using our own infrastructure. So this pink line is a, is a wireless connection from uh, from Water Tower One to Public Works. And then all these blue lines are all the connections from Public Works Wireless to Park Department, to Hobart Deter, to uh, Home Builders Shelter, to the Animal Shelter. And those work. Um, but that's with a caveat that if it's snowing real hard or raining real bad, they get flaky. If trees grow in the way, they just don't work at all. So we have been looking for a way to to replace that, the wireless system. If you look here at the Home Builders Shelter, you see these pink lines, they they go through trees all over the place. And this is, this is running the zoo and the golf course and and golf maintenance and Salt City Splash. And it's just not, it's just not good enough anymore. So uh, we, you know, we've been looking for a way to do it. Now that we've got that conduit, uh, you know, we, for for not very much money in the fiber optic world, we can, we can really, really fix this south end connection. Uh, what we would hope to do would be to hire a company to run a private fiber. And then um, and then hire a company such as Ideatech to uh, to manage it for us in case, you know, you get a, a, you know, a fiber cut in case the Park Department, you know, hits it with a, uh, you know, a road grader or something. Oh, you guys don't have road graders. So anyway, uh, this dark orange part is, those are all connections we already have with Ideatech. And uh, so we're well versed in working with them. And so, you know, I think we have a pretty good plan, but again, that kind of a plan takes money. And that, that estimate of a hundred and seventy-one thousand is is based on me, you know, grinding through all the the eventualities of that. So that's what I, oh, the other thing that's on here is MRF. If you notice, the the I T Equipment Replacement Program, that is a flat number. And that number never changes because I have taken that into my own a- asset management system and said, okay, take this number and spread it across twelve years and give me a, give me a price that it's gonna take. So some, some years are high, some years are low, and that, I just give you a nice flat number, so it never changes. You don't, and, and, but that like, is like servers and uh, this year, the police department's getting sixty-two new desktops, uh, it laptops and and projectors and TVs and cameras and just about everything you can think of that I T takes care of, uh, is in that equi, eh, equipment replacement program. It's spread out across a long time, and so that's how I'm able to keep those numbers flat.
So Todd, this I, this uh fiber, Ideatech is not gonna eventually get around to doing it?
So.
Provide it as a service?
They quoted me a million dollars because there's no customers down here except for us.
That's what I figured you would say, but I wanted to be sure.
Yeah, and the, the only other thing over here is is this uh trailer park, and they don't see that as ever have given enough, um, you know, in order to pay off this. So that's why a private fiber is required.
How many feet of fiber is it?
It's twenty-six hundred feet, roughly. I mean, you know, if you, if you zoom in on this, you can't really, I don't really know which side of the road it's on or, you know, where, where the right of way is and all that kind of stuff. You, there's a little jog here where we gotta run through a storm sewer, you know, all that kind of stuff you gotta do. Uh, you know, crossing railroad tracks is hard and all that stuff, so.
And so after the fibers run, you would terminate the wireless connection?
No, we would keep it in case somebody hit the the fiber with the, with the backhoe.
Keep it on at all times, or you would just keep it being able to be put up?
So it stays on. Yeah, and it's there. So if if somebody cut a fiber, these people would never know. And that's, so we'll, but we like to have backup. Right now, they know if something goes wrong. And that means, you know, we gotta climb Water Tower One, which is quite a thing.
So. You climb Water Tower One?
Actually, yes.
Oh, you did?
Yes, and two and three and four. So it's, it's fun. In a so-not-fun kind of a way.
There's no, I T is not down in Southland Town, because I live on B. I know they're not. So would this, could they start a selling point south in the town in B?
We are not allowed to provide municipal.
Oh, it's our, it's our line.
It's, this is just for us.
Okay, so they could say we'll take B Street, take all the south end, and they will start buying and make.
But we're not anywhere near that. Yeah, Ideatech is already working toward that, but that's, that's outside of any city, anything, except right of way.
I'm just trying to get some.
Licensing and stuff, but that's not, that's not I T.
You said we're not allowed to provide internet service?
We can't, we can't sell internet service because there's already providers here. So they, we're not allowed to be a, a provider unless there was no provider.
But can you turn it on for free?
Yeah, and you give it away?
Yeah, like. We, we give it a, we can give it away in in Wi-Fi. Uh, I would have to check regulations about actually putting it in somebody's house.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious about if that Wi-Fi network, if we're using it as a, potentially using it as a backup only, if that could be turned on.
So we're not using it as a backup only?
No, i- in the future.
Uh, yeah, we, we use it a lot. Uh, for example, uh, all the video in Orchard Park is coming off of that Wi-Fi.
Okay.
Um, so uh, if you notice, there's, uh, if I was to bring it up, I mean, I can go into this for hours, but the whole city is covered by a backup of Wi-Fi, uh, as well as like cameras and other kinds of systems. Uh, so, um, I don't know how much time I have, but if, if I was to bring up the traffic signal layer, for instance, uh, all the preemption system that we're putting in is all using that and is all pointed back at Water Tower One. So if, when we do preemption on Thirtieth Street, that'll all be wireless as well. So that's using this, this kind of overlay that we have over the whole city to keep from having to pay subscription costs, uh, which in, you know, were crazy when I started the the wireless wide area network. So we, we've saved, easily saved a million dollars having that.
We do need to keep, uh, on this, in this meeting, right?
Yeah.
Well, questions is great. We gotta keep things, keep things well.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. You have a lot to go over here. We have a lot of blank stares at you on some of these.
I, I'm, and I'll be happy to go into detail if anybody wants to come geek out.
Does that pretty much summarize what you have running?
Yeah.
Justin.
All right, we jump into Parks and Facilities. Um, which has these around. There should be enough for every council member and a couple extra's. Um, so I'll just go down the list in order, uh, and then we'll skip Airport. Also, I jumped down to the golf course and then Peter will parlay all the Airport, um, projects. Uh, I do wanna point out the two large projects, which are the handouts I just gave him, uh, are not in the recommended column. So seven point one one, the Angela scorecard out, does not include the, these two large projects. Uh, those projects have come up at council meetings and other meetings, so I just wanted to throw them out there, um, see what kind of interest there is. So, so with that, I'll just go down the list. Um, so the first one on the list is a parking lot, the Trail Parking Lot on the G B I Trail. Um, so that's the north plon, so north of Thirty. It's currently a gravel parking lot on Strong, on property owned by Jim Strong. Um, he's always been very gracious to allow us to do that. And we've had conversations with him that he would give that piece of property to us, um, so we could. so we could convert it to an actual real, um, trailhead. Uh, so a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the bulk of that is paving. And so we pave that and then do a few side amenities, maybe a small picnic shelter with a bench or two, a picnic table or two, a drinking fountain, those sorts of things. Um, this has been a project for a very long time, my CIP, and it's always been kind of a wishlist. Um, however, I think there's some private money available. So this could either be augmented by some private funding or maybe reduced the, the total cost by some-
How, how much private funding? Who's it?
Uh, I don't have, I don't, I don't know what the dollar number would be, but there was a, recently, a very well-known cyclist passed away. Um, there's been some, um, some energy behind doing something in his honor to name something after him or help him some private fundraising. So I don't know if that's ten thousand, if that's fifteen thousand, I don't know. Uh, the next item is the pickleball court, uh, or pickleball complex, I should say. So that's on the front sheet of the handout I gave you. Um, so pickleball's been kind of a hot topic in the last several years. Um, so I was asked to put together what a pickleball complex would look like. Um, so this site's at Cary Park, right next to Hobart Deter Field. Um, the two million dollar price tag does include a complete renovation of the parking lot for Hobart Deter. So about half, half a million dollars of that, um, would renew that entire parking lot. Um, and then the remaining would be to build a twelve-court complex, uh, that you see there. Um, again, that one is not in the recommended column at this point, um, but it's come up multiple times. I've been asked to at least present on what that could look like, uh, if we want to go that direction. So, uh, there has been some comments about potentially doing indoor/outdoor. Um, so because of the weather in Kansas, so if there was a, uh, a preference for more indoor or covered, maybe is a better term than indoor, uh, we could probably stay within that dollar amount but reduce the number of courts and it becomes a six-court facility or an eight-court facility with four of them covered or something like that. Uh, let's see, the next project, uh, is playground at Rice Park. This was a, a project that's cut from last year. Um, Rice Park's one of our more heavily used playgrounds with the ball fields. Uh, that playground is thirty, plus thirty years old. Um, parts of it are even older than that. So this would replace, uh, the playground to a modern and maybe accessible playground. Uh, let's see, the next item, Main Street Tables and Benches. Um, so this replaces all the tables and chairs and benches, um, down Main Street, basically as they sit today. So if there's currently a table and chair there, I priced it out that that would go back to a table and chair. Um, we may tweak that a little bit. We may have tables where it doesn't make sense when they, when they move that. But this would be just to replace everything, um, with a black PVC coated bench and tables, something you'd see, you know, in a park now or in a downtown area.
So it would not be metal?
It would be metal PVC coated.
Is that what we have now?
Yes.
And how long have those been there?
Uh, twenty, twenty years plus or minus. Uh, and that's about the life expectancy. Once that PVC coating starts to wear off, then the metal starts to rust. We've had a couple that have failed, so they have failed with the base, where the bases have rusted out. So we've had to move them a few times. Uh, let's see, the next item, uh, tennis court resurfaced. Um, so this would be for, uh, half of this project would be at Fairgrounds Park. So this would resurface four of the eight courts. Uh, the remaining four courts, uh, would be resurfaced by USD three oh eight. We did have an agreement with them. Um, they need to be resurfaced about every five to eight years. Um, and, and we're pushing that eight years to resurface these. Uh, the other piece of this would be to look at the courts at Elmdale Park. Um, so right now, there's really an unusable, um, tennis court and a basketball court. Uh, most likely though, that area is going to be taken up by a floodplain project. Uh, and so there would be enough money here to build a small multipurpose court, whether it's pickleball or basketball, pickleball on the other side of Cow, Cow Creek over closer to Elmdale. Uh, let's see, the next one is the big one, so that's turf at Fun Valley, um, and Hobart Deter. So if you remember back when we had our joint session, uh, we talked, and we spent quite a bit of time on this. Um, so four point two million, uh, is the total if we do, uh, at, so a hundred percent Hobart Deter. So that's everything inside the defenses, all the outfield, all the warning truck. Um, at Rice Park, that's infield only on Field One. So that's our baseball field. It currently has a grassy field, um, so we'd still have natural grass in the outfield. Um, at Fun Valley, uh, five, so it would be turf on six of the seven fields. So right now, we have fields one through seven. Uh, fields one, two, three, and four are in the primary, uh, floorplex. And then we have fields five and six, which are used very regularly. Field seven does not get a ton of use, so we would not include field seven. Um, for five of those fields, this would be infield only. Uh, for one field, so field three, which is where the college plays, would be a hundred percent. So it'd be, um, artificial turf the whole way. I have talked to the college about a cost share with this, and they're very open to that conversation, um, about helping pay for, uh, maybe the difference between, you know, at field two, we would only do infield, but on field three, we would do the whole thing. So maybe looking at what that difference would be. So the cost of doing the outfield for their, for their field, maybe some may be interested in. Um, there's also interest in helping at, at Hobart Deter, which is also their, their home baseball field.
And I might add to that, I, being a coach, we're losing business because our infield's are not. The other tournaments we have coming to Hudson, I come here because we don't have the grass field or whatever, they're not coming here. So in my opinion, we need to work something out where we get the grass field so we can get the tournaments back in Hudson, Kansas.
Yeah, there has been a, a pretty big drop in tournament usage at Fun Valley because of that with the facility in Goddard coming along, and Derby, um, has opened one recently as well. There's really, there's not enough tournaments right now that they can't go to our official field. Um, so they don't, they don't play a lot on natural grass. So until we convert, we're not going to get as many tournaments as we have, have historically. Fun Valley also hosts a lot of our league games. So tonight, there'll be double, double headers on, um, four or five of the fields. Tomorrow will be softball, so there'll be double, double headers on most of the fields as well. So don't think of this as just a, a tournament complex or tournament, um, facility. This would be used nearly every day, uh, just by local teams as well. Uh, let's see, moving to city hall renovations, um, so a little bit of security updates to the building. Um, several months ago, several weeks ago, we did a, an active shooting, shooter drill in the building, identified some areas of concern, primarily how open it is. So if somebody wants to do something very bad in this building, there's nothing stopping them, no physical barrier stopping them. Uh, so this provides some control points by utility building and also some control points on this end, on the, on the east end of the building. So somebody can't just free roam in the building without being led in, um, by, by an employee. That number is, can be flexible, and we're working with, um, an architect. And I have not seen any numbers back, so that's kind of my first, first guess, guess at it. So I'm, I'm pretty confident it'll be near, near that number. Um, the next couple items on the list are airports. We'll skip those, we'll go down to the golf course master plan. Um, so golf course master plan, uh, so this is a phase project. Uh, we currently, um, have completed every hole except five, so we have five remaining holes. Uh, the driver behind this project is to update the irrigation system. The irrigation system is working on sixty-plus-year-old cast iron, uh, main lines and then thirty-year-old, um, lateral lines and, and irrigation heads. So as we, um, go hole by hole and replace the irrigation system, we're also making some playability improvements. Um, so the, the next phase to be completed, um, is fifteen and sixteen, which is the area kind of down by the playground, the south end of Cary Park. Um, and then the other three holes that we have to do are ten, eleven, twelve. So that's kind of the out and back as you start the back nine at Cary, Cary Park. Uh, the plan would be, um, so this is the final, uh, funding phase for holes fourteen and fifteen. So this would be under construction if approved, uh, towards the end of twenty-four, kind of after the playing season, so late twenty-four, early twenty-five. Um, and then there'd be one remaining phase that'd come a few years later for ten, eleven, twelve. Um, so those are all the park. Now, that was really fast and a lot of big projects in there, so I had a really pause for, for questions, so.
Are we ever going to do anything about the drains, um, at Deter? When it rains hard, it's all water, or did you know there was a problem with drains?
Yeah, so this would, as part of the, um, uh, artificial turf project, it would, um, hopefully create a smaller detention area outside of the outfield fence, outside, kind of left center, so we can, because it sits in a hole, there's no place for the water to go.
Right.
On the, on the artificial turf, if that is something, it's, it's a big number, um, and we're already pushing the, the max. Um, I think we could phase it in. Um, you know, it's about roughly two million to do all of Fun Valley and roughly two million to do Hobart and Rice. Um, baseball fields are just a lot bigger than softball fields, so that's why, that's why we can do so many more softball fields. Um, it would be an opportunity to phase that in. Um, there might be some additional mobilization fees if we do it over two years, but I don't think it'd be, it'd be huge since they're already, since the fields are spread out over town already. They're going to have to move equipment regarding this.
So what do you mean by phasing it in, just one, a couple at a time?
Uh, so I think the most logical phasing would be to do either all of Fun Valley first, two, three, and one, and then do Hobart and Rice as phase two. Or you could reverse that and do baseball first and then, and then softball.
If we look at something like that, can you get, like, if we want to do Fun Valley by itself only, can you give us a number to that?
It would be about two million, so it'd be, be about half.
Okay.
Can you speak quickly to, do you think some of that business will come back if we do?
I do, yeah.
You do?
Yeah, I, I think some of it will. I don't know that we'll ever get back to the two thousand seventeen, eighteen numbers, which was kind of pre-Genesis, which is the Goddard Complex and Darski, which is, um, Derby. I don't know if we'll ever get back to that, but we'll definitely attract those sixty-team tournaments. Um, you know, that could generate, and historically have generated, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars in direct, um, profit, not to, not to account all the, all the indirect, you know, mail, soul and those sorts of things.
Can you contrast that to pickleball, the fastest running sport in the United States? What are your thoughts?
Um-
And quickly, because I, this is, I have a hole and I'm sorry.
Um, and that's, I, pickleball is so new and so fast-growing, to project that long-term, I really don't know. Uh, I mean, they have the potential, but I, I wouldn't be comfortable without doing some research on it. And I, I want to send you down the wrong, wrong path.
I have a question. Um, you said that this page was like your wishlist, right? Um, do you know what, uh, like, the parking repairs without the pickleball would be?
Um, yeah, so about half a million dollars is about what that would be total. And that's a complete reconstruct of that. You know, right now, it's kind of, it's not even technical asphalt. It's asphalt millions that have been compacted over thirty years. So about half a million dollars to, uh, completely repave that and organize it. There's some sidewalk connections.
And this trail connection is insisting, right?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Collins?
Kick it over to Peter. I guess I'm up. So Mike can know a lot quicker, all you have to do is say, yep, let's do that. We can skip on this, it'd be so short. Yep, so I have-
Love explaining later.
Yeah, just trust me. So here's, I've got ten copies of, uh, one of these projects here that we'll talk about real quick. So, um, kind of the, the easiest one, two of the four projects I have listed on there are federal grant matches. So these projects are funded at ninety percent by the FAA. They're already programmed by the FAA, so they're expecting to spend this money. That doesn't mean we necessarily have to, but part of our pavement, uh, our pavement maintenance program-
You know what I mean?
Requires us to do this. So the first one is the taxiway, uh, Bravo Joint Seal Grant Match for seven hundred thousand. Our grant match would be, um, seventy thousand. So that, uh, that, this taxiway-
So you're saying it's seven hundred thousand, but it's only actually going to be seventy thousand?
For us, right.
That's all, okay.
Yeah, ten percent, right, right. So, um, that's the taxiway, the parallel taxiway that serves runway one, seven, three, five, which is our runway we rebuilt in two thousand seventeen out there. This taxiway was put in, it was rebuilt in two thousand one. And honestly, it's one of the best pieces of pavement we have out there. We haven't had to really even touch it, um, since then. Um, it is time, there's a couple spots that are spalling, um, the joint, uh, the joint seals in between the concrete panels, uh, some of those are starting to crack up a little bit. So this, um, seven hundred thousand repairs all that and repairs those little spot places of concrete. It also provides, uh, new paint. So we'll paint all the surface painted opposition signs, old signs, taxi lanes, all that kind of stuff out there. So that's all taxiway Bravo. Um, the Midwest Apron Expansion Grant Match. Again, this is another ninety-ten split, FAA pays for ninety percent of it, we pay for ten percent of it. This money, this is on the, what we just handed out here. This project, um, is part of the, uh, bipartisan infrastructure law money that came out to airports. So out of that, however many billions of dollars, they allocated an extra, whatever, forty-five or fifty billion dollars for airports on entitlement funding, which is the funding that you're guaranteed to get for your projects, with the idea that we can use this money for projects that aren't as high priority. So the, the regular AIP funding process gives us money to do runways, taxiways. You need to do this so you can keep your runways open. This funding allows you to use it towards some of those different projects that have been kind of, keep getting kind of kicked down the road because the priority for the other projects wasn't as priority. So this project would actually expand the Midwest Malibu Apron. And I think we've talked about it before, we had some issues last year. Um, the amount of work that Tony does over there in the hangar, that apron fills up. You put two or three planes right here and you can't, you can't do anything. Um, this project will kick that pavement out, you know, about another fifty foot, and provide a dedicated taxi lane, which is basically a piece of pavement that an aircraft can taxi on without talking to the control tower, give direct access to the self-serve fuel station, um, that's out there. And in the process, it will replace, um, additional pavements that are out there that are currently failing, pretty much this pink area and this orange area. Um, I already have funding this year in place, and the project hopefully starts sometime this summer to replace the bad panels in the areas that are not highlighted in here. So, um, that, that's not even all of our entitlement money. This is only using about seventy-five percent of it, so there's going to be money left over afterwards for other projects in the future. But, um, so our ten percent match for this would basically give Tony Midwest Malibu plenty more space to park airplanes and then the route for aircraft to get in and out of self-serve fueling. So that's the, that's that project. The, um, let's see here, let me jump over quick to the airport terminal FAA parking lot maintenance. So that is the parking lot that the FAA uses to park in as well as, um, parking lot in front of the steakhouse and the salad steakhouse. This was included in, uh, the ask from last year. We, we jumped, we put together the Midwest Malibu parking lot, Wells parking lot, parking lot number one, and the, um, terminal steakhouse parking lot. We pulled this one out and did the other two, uh, other two parking lots last year. So we put it back in for this year to see if we're, and should we do that. Um, the pavement, it's an asphalt parking lot. This project is for a mill and overlay, basically grind it down, put new pavement back in and strip it. So no, no geometric improvements or no drainage improvements. It, it drains pretty well as it is, it's just time for a new surface. That's the, uh, that's the, the parking lot. I, I wanted to kind of mention too, so, I mean, I know we've done, we did concrete parking lots in Midwest Malibu and, uh, Wells Aircraft. I know some of the other parking lot projects in town, we do the, um, I guess I call it the chip seal, is what it is. Um, this one, you know, my preference, I guess, would be for a little bit nicer kind of mill and overlay because, um, well, it's the airport steakhouse, it's the longest continuously operating restaurant, actually, in the county. And he's got plans, the current owner has plans to expand the restaurant, both to the east with his bar area and expand the kitchen area, um, to the west as well. And he does, um, he does pretty good service. It's arguably one of the nicer restaurants in town pretty much anymore. So keeping it kind of first-class, nice paved parking lot, nice bright paint, I think, uh, I think kind of bodes well for his business as well as, as us supporting the facility that, that he operates out of, so. Um, and finally, the, uh, I'd like you to build a big old hangar out there for me so we can put everything- so we can put airplanes in and hire jobs, so eight hundred thousand.
That'll do it?
That will do it, well. So that number, that's actually been in our budget for ten years, quite a while. Um, and it was originally put in there as a uh, kind of just a standard box hangar. Simple, between eight and ten thousand square foot, you know, no office space, something like that. Just a box hangar to store aircraft in. Um, in conversations we've had with some other people that are interested in doing some stuff out at the airport, we've talked about, you know, if, if the city were to bond a hangar, what would it take to basically get the taxi lanes and the aprons up to where that hangar location is going to be? Um, the cost estimates that we've got fall between the eight hundred and the nine hundred thousand dollars to provide those payments. So I, I've kind of reworded the justification for this eight hundred thousand for just hangar development costs. Whether it's used for a hangar, build it and they will come, or whether it's used to, let's work with somebody and you know, bond out the hangar and then have their lease agreement pay back the bonds. And then we have the, you know, the, the money in place to provide apron and the taxi lane to it, tie it in. Um, it really kind of depends where on the airport we want to do the development. Um, it would go a long way towards developing the area in north of Tony's up there. Um, this meeting came up a little bit fast. I don't have the updated numbers for that yet, but should any time here. Um, kind of getting some of the areas more shovel ready to the north, Tony, with access roads and facilities and.
When you talk about the eight hundred, you're confusing me. So that is for the hangar and the taxiways or, or one or the other?
It, it could be one or the other. It's just consider it airport hangar development costs. You can use it for the pavement, you could use it to build the hangar.
It wouldn't do both, is what you're saying. So it would, it would, uh, to do both, you, you're talking about a million and a half to two million.
Right, that's a pretty good number.
There are people though that are willing to, to move forward on the hangar if the infrastructure was in place at their own expense.
You mean they would?
We would probably bond it for them using industrial.
Okay, and then we lease it to them?
Yes.
So we would have to pay, well, we, we take the bond for the hangar, but then we got to, the eight hundred here is on us. And then, of course, we could try to build the, build that into the lease to, I'm not saying we can, I'd pull it off. But I mean, you could try, but no.
Yeah, and the intent was to leave it early vague. So if, if we did get approached by developer, we've got something in the budget that we can.
And you have, you have, I assume you have been approached by the developer?
Yes, yeah.
And T-hangers are off the table for now, right? Is that right?
So nobody, I haven't, I know there are a couple of other people who will kind of work on doing the T-hangers. I haven't heard stuff, heard, heard much here in probably the last month about where we're at with T-hangers. Eight hundred thousand would, would get you pretty close to another set of T-hangers actually, right now, so.
Now, when you say that, do you mean uh, 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 ju- just, just the taxiway and just the concrete and the, to, to, to? Not, not actually including a T-hanger?
So basically where we built the T-hangers the last time in two thousand nineteen, we engineered it in such a way that most of the pavement's already there.
Okay, yes.
So we, that eight hundred thousand would put just another building right next to where it already is.
With the pavement.
Yeah, and put the pavement around it so they can get, get away around it, so.
We could recruit in the little cute thing.
In the little cute things, yeah.
And one of the reasons you're structured this way too is uh, for someone from the private sector to come to us and ask to build a building and then we have to explain the budgeting process and it's going to be two or three years before we can get a project to move that, that quickly. So it's a reason why we left it fairly vague. Um, I suppose the same, we want to build this hangar in this spot at this cost. It's, this gives us the opportunity to develop and somebody does get really serious about, about building the hangar. It puts us in that position to, to move quickly for the, for the first time since I've been here.
Thank you for your creative thinking.
Is there a possibility for a private developer to build T-hangers and lease the ground from the airport and lease it out individually, the individual spaces and manage and lease that out?
Um, yeah, it's been talked about before, it can be done, but to make the numbers work, it'd be about a forty-year investment for that, that individual to do it. If you can find somebody that's willing to, to spread that out over forty years to get their money back, sure. But the, the problem is you could get it paid back sooner, but we're going to price ourselves out of the market. The, the Cessna one seventy-two owners aren't going to pay five hundred dollars a month to keep their money in the hangar, so. Uh, some of this depends too, and here I start getting technical on stuff. It depends on what area of the airport we want to develop as well. If we're talking about that area directly south of the steakhouse parking lot, that big kind of open area right next to the old set of T-hangers, you need about eight hundred, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of infrastructure to build something there. That's not even counting the building, that's just getting apron and a taxi lane so the aircraft can get to it. If we're talking about putting something down at the south end, um, between the little round top hangar and the water bomber hangar, you don't have near as much pavement you need to put in there. You're going to have to put some, two hundred thousand dollars worth of concrete, but not eight hundred thousand because there's already a taxi lane there. So you just need to tie the building into that taxi lane so they can come through that way. But they don't have as much space down there. Parking lots, utilities, stuff like that is a little bit more difficult to get into that area down there, so.
Which site is more preferable to the people who are having the conversations about coming into town?
Um, everything I've heard so far has been south of the, the steakhouse, that open lot between the, the parking lot and the, and the old T-hangers.
Yeah, about ten, twelve thousand square feet building.
Oh, easy. And if you build something there, it doesn't limit what he could do with the restaurant building, so.
And, and obviously, we would, if this is a present budget, we'd come back to council whenever we have that specific project and what those dollars were. So this is just putting that spot in the budget that we're, that we've got allocated so we can, so we can move quickly when, when a project really grows.
There's still a big picture in this episode right now.
So trying to get ourselves, put us in the position that we can actually react as opposed to saying, well, we can put it in the budget next year and then if it's approved, ten years later, we can maybe do something, which is pretty often putting that, some of the private, the private development.
And it seems like of all the conversations that are being had about the airport, none of them are necessarily like, if we did this, we can't do that. You know, excluding different projects down the road because it seems like people already kind of have their own plans or sites on different things.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, yeah. Like I have an idea of where they want to build and what they want to do there. But they want, they want the city to run the infrastructure costs so they can put their building where they want it.
Of course.
Are there any, any more questions in the airport?
All right, where we going?
Jacob.
I'm sitting down. Couple visual aids for you guys. I'm not sure if I met everybody. I'm Jacob Coy, Assistant Public Works Director, spelling out for Brian today. Uh, we've got a couple of projects, starting with the traffic, traffic signal maintenance at Thirtieth and Main. It's kind of an ongoing thing. We did Thirtieth and Plum this year, Thirtieth and Main next year. Staying along that thirtieth corridor for the next few years is the plan. Just replacing the cabinets, controllers, detection system, conflict monitors, traffic heads, adding some battery backups to the systems.
You're doing all the electronic systems, you're not, we're doing anything to the poles, mass arms and so forth, correct?
That's what I understand, yeah.
So we're putting a new controller in there.
The current controllers.
And it's going to have the preemption system in it and we can put it in, correct?
Yes.
Um, that's forty-eight thousand, am I right? Uh, that's for the controllers and for the new lights. Are they three M lights or are those regular LED lights?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay, I'm pretty sure they're LEDs. And that's all, we're going to pull new wire and everything?
I believe so, yeah.
Thirtieth and Main, is that Thirtieth and Main we're talking about?
Yep.
I think that thing got pulled new wire probably about four years ago, if I believe right. What's that?
It was in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, yeah, I was there, I remember it.
And only one of it, not, not all of it.
All of it. Okay.
Questions in that one?
No, that's just, that's just the material, that's not the labor. We're doing it ourselves, right? Or what? We're doing it ourselves, right? Okay.
And the next one is the salt storage bin for public works facility. Uh, that one, I have some pictures for you guys. Obviously a very corrosive environment in there storing salt. That at a hundred thousand and four. Plan right now would be to go back with the pretty much exact same color.
So is this just replace the uh, fabric and then?
The fabric and that galvanized steel is what we're going to be replacing. The concrete will be the mistake. Nobody's got any questions on that. The last one we have is the waterline replacement project. And eight sections in two thousand twenty-four, about one point five miles. In various locations around that map there. Basically looking at the little main breaks, uh, age and things like that and deciding the best. The best kind of factors based on current maintenance requirements.
Why is Cessna highlighted fourth and nine?
What?
On the, on the sheet here?
Each two.
There's a highlighted line item, is there a particular reason for that?
That was. We should remove that one. That would be moved because there was a lot of water surfaces that are improperly installed. It was going to, um, to, to uh, relink Cessna over to the airport road. But it's going to have a whole lot of extra infrastructure that will be required. And so it didn't fit into the budget of that year, so they got to move it to a future year. That's all part of that two thousand fifteen study saying we need to replace the three miles a year. It's not getting there. Cost of things.
So with the waterline projects, Brian plans to apply for the SRF loan again like he is currently. Um, so part of that may be forgivable. So I have that in the water fund geo-bond column, but it'll actually be the SRF loan.
All right, and the total dollar amount, we may end up with a pretty difficult amount of that.
Yeah.
Got a little over three hundred thousand on this year's.
If there's no more questions for Jacob, we can.
I have a question, sorry, on the uh, salt bin.
Uh huh.
Um, is this structure industry, industry standard? This is what everybody else is doing?
Yeah, it's pretty normal to see that.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
And how much did we spend last year on waterline? What was budgeted, let's just put it that way? Were we going up on that?
Let's see. Um, one million, seven hundred fifty thousand is what we budgeted last year. Um, Brian's really good about updating his revenue projections and his bond payments and all his reserves, so. I'm not concerned about being able to pay that back or anything like that.
We had to talk about the CIP reserves.
Um. There's probably a few you want to talk about.
Those were my main ones, I think.
Yeah.
Those ones have been a little bit more, but okay. Um, starting out, I'll start up top. I just had to put some of my reserves in for uh, the presentation. Sorry, I didn't get to everything I wanted to get to. Time's not short. Um, so engineering, our first one is the Sea Clip Project, K sixty-one from US fifty to Avenue G southbound. Right now, we currently have bid the project and we'll be milling overlaying uh, sixty-one from US fifty to Avenue G, but just the northbound section. And then we'll be doing the Avenue G and sixty-one intersection. And then we will be chip sealing the shoulders from Avenue G northbound to seventeenth. This project, we've applied for the grant with KDOT and it will mirror that for all of the southbound. That is an eighty-five fifteen split and it maxes out at uh, yeah, somewhere right in, right around two, three hundred, yeah, three hundred ninety thousand, I guess. Uh, so we, the reason we broke that into northbound and southbound was to maximize on the eighty-five fifteens. If we didn't get it this year and it was funded, it would be automatically reapplied for in twenty-six. And like, it's going to be really hard pressed to see that we don't get it in twenty-five, twenty-five fiscal year, which it did actually, we did bid the project in July of twenty-four.
So strategically it's.
Right.
I see the Hallstead Street and Bridge replacement on six, you took those out?
Yes, so Hallstead Street is, is in dire need of repair, but with the Woody C project coming in and taking up so much of the budget, um, it's band-aided as much as it can be band-aided, bandaged. So if it absolutely starts falling apart, we can have a different discussion. There's still some band-aids you can do, but it's beat to death. And so basically, there's just no more maintenance cost to it because it can't even move.
Is that a comfort level?
Well, it's, it's a, there's a maintenance cost to it where if, if we, instead of spending the money right now to maintain a street that's not costing anything to maintain, that's not completely, you know, untransversible, that you go ahead and prolong that cost to do your higher priority projects that maybe don't, that, before they get to the point where they're beat to death.
Gotcha.
Where is G to mine?
That is um, right by the middle of Security Prison or is that their food distribution? Right there on, when you're going down Avenue G, then if you're going down Hallstead, it goes to basically the salt mine road there. That's that little short.
Not very far.
Nope.
I think that's where we went for.
Yes, I think that was going to be the way that we were going to be requesting.
There, there's a cemetery there, you can come down that.
Yeah, okay.
Great view of the cemetery.
I drove on it today.
And that doesn't do anything uh, to the north of the tracks, which uh, or whatever, which is a complete, you know.
Right, and then the projection was this.
I mean, there's no road there. I mean, it's just kind of like off-road driving, but when you go north of the mine road.
Right, and so this one, that's why this one would have, coupled with another project, this one was twenty-four, twenty-five was Cary Boulevard to Fourth Avenue. I mean, projecting out, so.
I, why would, I, I, this is just a question, I'm not questioning the decision. The, I, I've driven on that a, a number of times. So from, from G to the mine road is actually in pretty good shape compared to, compared to the mine road to Forester, which is.
Actually, G to mine road, um, started, it's, it's, it's in pieces like six inches big and smaller. It's, it was falling apart and starting to spread out because it, it, it atrophied so bad. So a couple of years ago, we grabbed a circle C while they were here, did an emergency chip uh, scrub seal to make a band-aid to try and glue everything back together to hold it together until we could get there. So once that starts wearing out, it's just going to start falling immediately back apart again. So the goal, if you go really slow, you're going to start seeing some of the alligator ring starting to show back through that.
Okay.
And so you have to go slow, but I'm, it is, it is, the band-aid makes it look like it's in better condition.
Yeah, okay.
But isn't there a culvert under there?
There is a culvert under there. Um, we're having that evaluated with the twenty, uh, the first and star project right now.
The culvert is, is that, there is a culvert there.
Right, yeah, yeah. At the GBI.
And the bridge replacement over six, is that West Six?
No, that is East Six that's over just.
Oh, it would be, yeah.
It's just south of the mall and everything.
Yeah, we've been working on another one over on the other one.
Yep.
And, and this is one of those box culvert deals, that's called the bridge.
We, we've been budgeting them for every other year. Um, this one, some, I don't know if one got pushed or somehow, but all of a sudden now we, we bonded two, uh, back to back. And so the thought was this one could easily be pushed out and just to continue our every other year, uh, attempt to get rid of those four ton, um, boxes.
Okay.
Woody C Phase Two. Suppose you all know a lot about that. It's due, it's, it's under designed. The plan, the attempted to bid in January, so. We don't bond it. I think ARPA money set for it, but if we don't, if it didn't proceed, then.
So we have 621,000 of ARPA money left over. That's what is in the grant, um, column there. And so we anticipate we can use that ARPA money by the end of 24. So we're obligated, um, as required. Um, but that's money we had budgeted to use for the first phase of, of Woody C, but then we got the cost share grant, so we didn't need it all there. So we plan to use it for the next phase.
And we will be reapplying for a cost share grant. Um, we can go up to 1.5 million. I would recommend, they're not big on giving people back to back to back grants. Um, since we only applied for 900,000, I was thinking we'd apply for maybe five or 600,000 to fill out what, if we would have applied for a full 1.5 million. Um, and then, uh, part, trying to partner with South Hutch because they really like when adjoining entities, um, apply to this grant together. That's where we had brought on Reno County. And this last one, it really strengthened our grant. They, they made several comments about how happy they were with these entities because typically they don't tend to work together, I guess. So, uh.
Would it benefit us to bring Reno County and South Hutch?
Uh, well, there's, Reno County doesn't have any more adjoining infrastructure. They're, they're taking care of all of theirs. The big bridge just, but yes, it would if there was a location.
If they like, we'll call them.
If we get that grant, then does it give us back that?
It wouldn't, it would give back bonding capacity, right?
We could choose either way.
Well, but, sorry. Does that have to be uncovered at the end of this year?
It has to be uncovered by the end of 24. So if we knew in time, yes. So if we knew in time, we could reallocate ARPA or we could lower the amount we bond and use that bonding capacity to bond something else. So that would be council's decision.
All right. That's all mine. You want to pull the, uh? Can I talk about ADA ramps? Yeah. So ADA ramps, that is just a small budget item. We keep it. And then, like you can see, this was actually the, um, in the left picture, it said, you know, how, but the, three of the intersections don't have upgraded ramps. The one that is already upgraded to the, um, library. When we did the safe routes to our safe sidewalk program with the ADA budget, we were able to go ahead and grab those ramps and improve them at the same time. And a lot of times when we're running into adjoining projects, ProWAG, which is the new ADA standard, says if you touch a ramp or touch a curb in front of a ramp or millen overlay or resurface a street and there's a location that is supposed to have a ramp that doesn't, you have to put a ramp in. So this fund allowed us to do that. It's to keep up with standard. Another thing that this does is the federal government requires you to be proactively changing out ramps. And if you're not, they determine you're not, and you're not funding a program, they can say that they will cut all funding to you and to, until you complete all of your ramps, um, which is, has happened to City of Warner. So the money, and it gives 90% of it back because they have all of their own better grant people with KDOT. Um, and it's just the quarter percent sales tax and our growth fund. And this one obviously is our millen overlaying of streets. Um, we have bad sections that go bad. We try to keep up with it. This is the one, if you cut it and you'll start having more complaints for potholes. All right. This is the program that keeps up with that.
And you'll see the amount that's recommended that we fund and then what we actually anticipate we can fund. So we should be funding 2.1 million and we're proposing 1.3.
The proposed funding came off of our pavement, uh, study. Our last pavement study was done six years ago with the recommended amount that we didn't need to maintain our current level of infrastructure. We've used that, and I just take that with a 2.5% uh, inflation rate every year. Since then, um, this is the one that IMS is performing this year. And so we'll have new numbers in August for what we need to maintain our current level of street rating. We've gotten pretty creative. Um, I pulled a lot of different, um, treatments that are stretching the money quite a bit, but there, there's going to be a part where you can't band-aid the band-aid anymore. And then we will fall back into funding at that level. Um, just about some years. All right. The next one was Brick Street Maintenance Reserve. That was a council, uh, request that we put some money in there. There was, there's no plan, so right now it's just a smaller amount. Um, IMS, we're having them evaluate that, um, this year so that they can come up with a plan. And say, basically, here's your worst locations and group and then on down. So then we can try and develop what a plan looks like. I was working with, uh, city manager to come up with a plan for those, uh, with like a direct directive. So that'll, that'll be a conversation that probably needs to happen and seeing what that, that everybody would want that to look like. Really, not much else to say about that one because it just hasn't started yet. Uh, the Bridge Maintenance Reserve, um, it's one that we request every other year. What it does, that we did the Fifth Street on the Harsha, um, bridge this year or this last year. It is one that allows us to start moving as preventative more than reactive maintenance. Um, we were able, we were able to catch the, the bridge deck, do patching at a significantly reduced rate. What would it cost if you continued to allow water to get inside of the bridge decks and crack them apart? That's, the problem that KDOT is having is the year that, uh, the up there on K 61 right now was the year that they should have funded it. They couldn't fund, they didn't fund it. And now they're already three times over the amount of quantity that they estimated and bid for that project. Bridges, once you start getting water down in the rebar and they start shifting inside the decks, they, they can start falling apart pretty quick. So. Crack sealing program is just something that is absolutely required. It keeps the water out of the pavement. The two things that damage pavement the most, sunlight and water. So, uh, the arterial, we've already seen great results with the cracks. Just doing the two to five year cracks on, um, on top of, after our millen overlays. And it has to be done on the residential. So if we're going to keep on, um, using the band-aid method, just to keep them along our seven year rotation. This is our first year running, our second year going through it. So now we're starting to get some data to figure out where that funding request needs to be. I had to fund some of it this year out of arterials, last year funded, so we'll be monitoring that.
I've noticed that we hire that dent. Is that right?
That's correct.
We don't have enough machines to do that?
Uh, it's, that is a public works. It's a battle of what, what level of service you want to provide on everything. And so when you say, do you want to be doing some concrete repairs, street repairs? They're doing this, what, the patching now for like the water department on main breaks instead of the water department doing it. So they can do it, but that's, it is a very large section. So you're talking about taking months of whatever they were going to work on and putting it on this. And then you're going to be hiring out, uh, whatever the other months.
The bottom line is we don't have enough people to.
Not to be. It depends, like I said, it would depend on what level of service you want.
That's what I'm saying. Yes.
Yeah. We don't have enough people to, to, I don't think, to crack seal and perform all of the duties that they're going to get.
We don't have as many people as when I was there. So it's, yeah, I understand.
The downtown maintenance improvements, this is a new one that I would like to start. I think it's important. We really talk about our downtown a lot. We try to bring a lot of things downtown. It's started, I don't remember when the, the construction started with the street, or the beautifications down there, but it is not aging. We, we haven't kept up with, it's aging. And so it's not aging gracefully anymore. Um, on the left, there's bricks that are completely deteriorating and falling out of the ramps. Um, we have them all over the downtown area. That is kind of a big ADA no-no. And we definitely don't, the ADA budget itself couldn't even begin to touch because of the beautification and a lot of the pavers and things like that. It's, it needs its own kind of budget item. You can see on the right, there's a crosswalk. There's multiple crosswalks around there that did the same thing where they tried to inlay brick inside of concrete and created a water valley, which just held, held water and then froze. So, um, we've come up with a new plan on how to rebuild all those crosswalks. We did it at Fifth and Main. I really like the design, uh, simple and durable. This one, on the one on the right, we're getting ready to replace, and that's just because we recently had two people fall. And, um, so we, uh, I was given the directive to repair it. And I have some funding left in ADA and whatever to go ahead and take care of that one right now, that one location. But we have at a hundred thousand dollars, like, it would still take years to get through. Everything we've identified as needing to be replaced and then not counting the continued atrophy that's going to continue, um, outside of this. Um, and then again, that's if you're wanting to continue to bring, you know, Third Thursdays and everything downtown, then we start having people fall on our ADA stuff, I start having concerns.
This is from C Street, uh, from C Street all the way to Third, right? Is that the downtown we're talking about?
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
To C from Washington to Walnut. And then a couple of other little areas, outliers.
Greg, isn't this part of the new downtown area where we're going over right now? You know, the, trying to redo it? Is that?
Well, I think they're just doing work from those turfs.
I see.
Am I right?
Of where?
Fifth and Main.
Yep.
And this is, this is actually right down by Avenue Eight Park where people have fallen. And that's going to start soon.
Whenever we can get the contractor back in town.
Okay.
A hundred thousand dollars, how far does that go?
Well, right here to replace this, both ADA ramps here on both sides of this, cut out the entire crosswalk, put it back in in red dyed concrete, repair the current, or the sidewalk of ours that's, that is, outside of ADA compliance, this is a quarter inch. And then replace some valley over there. I think we're at 25,000 dollars. And that's, this is one of the bigger repairs. Some of the intersections, like it would probably do the intersection. And then some of the areas, if you said you wanted to focus more on the ADA ramps, you know, those are, uh, $4,000 a piece. So.
So ADA sidewalk replacement is a line item in regards to the whole city.
Yes.
The downtown maintenance improvements includes a, could include ADA projects, but is its own.
Yes.
And is specifically downtown.
Right. The majority of our ADA money, our ADA ramps money has been spent on places where we didn't have appropriate ramps. It's to bring us into federal compliance, whereas this one would be one that we've already installed in the downtown area.
So it is a little confusing. There's two ADA reserves. One engineering, engineering has specifically for ramps. The other one, the one you mentioned, ADA sidewalk replacement, um, that's in gray.
Yeah.
That is just one we keep, um, for ADA improvement, sidewalk improvements to city and local facilities. So there's something out in front of this building or a park somewhere. That's what that's for. I, I didn't, I, I took back the request this year. We've got a balance and a complaint to go to years.
And not enough identified issues.
Not, not at this point. So if we were to get a few complaints, there's a balance there. We can take care of that.
Sure.
And then, yeah, the last one I have is residential street maintenance, and that's just the chip seal projects that we do. That are, we have the city on an eight year rotation.
Right.
So every street gets touched every eight years. Then life expectancy of chip seals between seven and 10 years, depending on traffic volumes, turning movements, all the different things. So we can start mapping it out as we go through the city, time after time, saying, hey, this area is still lasting. This area needs to be hit more often.
And I'm assuming that's up 7% or whatever inflation is on that line item. If it's just ongoing, obviously it keeps going up.
Right. And so that's, that's as just, we, the way we've worked it is that we fully fund the residential so that we can keep up on that eight year rotation because we, if, to do a millen overlays, way back before all the inflation, it was like 150 years to millen overlay every residential street. That's just not, you know, feasible. So if we let the eight years start lapsing, you, some of the streets are deteriorated enough. I think they would deteriorate rapidly.
My, my question was, is, it's allowed for the inflation to, you've added more into that line item, I'm assuming.
Yes.
So that we can keep up with that six, eight year rotation.
Gotcha.
One small question. Um, Greg will be interested in this and is, are we going to get to B Street this year? All that stuff and pulling the anchor and all, is that part in the plan yet? Because I hear it all the time. I don't know if Greg hears it. I hear it all the time. She goes down like that. And being main?
We hear.
Really tracks? No, right there where the anchor and everybody's right there in that area. It's a lot of holes there. And I constantly hear about it. I don't know if Greg is.
Oh, well. My, I just wanted to, to do a millen overlay on the Uniblock East and West. I don't know if that's what you're talking about. And we're kind of waiting on the brick study to get back and see if that makes sense. I still would love to do that, but I mean.
Right, I understand.
One of those things. I mean, can you just do it out of your general budget?
If there's money left over sometime.
I'm not really good at that.
Justin, I have a question. So the artificial turf, Fun Valley, Hobart, Better, Rice Park, all of that stuff. I know you're not asking for that this year.
Well, I, I did, but looking at.
Right.
To get us where we need to be, that was one that, to do that or push Woody C back in here, which I know that, that discussion.
Yeah. Can you show us what all of that stuff is separated out? I know you gave us some rough numbers, like two over that.
So in the, um.
Cause I'm just curious, like if, if we take it bit by bit, which I know makes the cost go up a little bit per project, but you know, is there?
So in, um, this back of it, behind my justification, um, it does break it out.
Okay.
And I can break it down even further, um, by, um, per field. So, um, I, I mean, I thought we'd kind of get to that, um, yeah, kind of all a car type option. So, um. So for, for example, it says, you know, Hobart, Deter, Full Field, that's the entire thing. Hobart, Deter, Fun Valley, five fields infield only, um, so 1.2. So you can divide that out by five to get what the per field cost would be to do the one infield or infield only. And then you see the next number is, is 100% Fun Valley, so you can feel, says one, but it's really filled with three. We have Rice Park separated there.
If we just did Hobart, Deter, the, the college, what are they willing to pay?
Uh, we haven't got down to that, that far, but I mean, I would guess we'd be close to the 50, 50. I mean, if you look at the amount of square feet in the infield versus outfield, there's a lot more in the, in the outfield. Doesn't use a higher quality turf in the infield because it gets most of the quality. So, um, we could be close to that. I've had that conversation with the athletic director, you know, waiting on how this conversation went to, to really talk is, is 50, 50 realistic or not?
And just to do Hobart, Deter?
1.2 ish.
I thought, not counting the parking lot.
Not, that's just.
Just turf.
That's just turf from, you know, and the entire slots, everything fence to fence, so warning tracks, everything behind the plate. There are no, no natural.
And that would fix all the drainage problems and?
That along with it, we would, you know, all new base, new rock base and then drain it all. I did work with three, um, very well-known, um, repel turf manufacturers and installers. So I'm kind of rounding some numbers based on those, but I'm, I'm confident that this is where they'll be. And obviously we'll do an RFP process and select some of them.
I'd be shocked at this point, but.
It's, these aren't low, low bid numbers, which we don't want low bid turf anyway. It creates more headaches and sort of. Um, so these are, I think, realistic bunch of numbers.
So Mr. Mayor, we made decisions today. So Mr. Mayor, we make decisions today, we come back and discuss.
Let's, let's talk to Angela on how she would like to move forward with this process.
I have a question. Coming down here on the C I D for the airport land acquisition, what, what was that?
Yeah. Um, so that's, uh, R P Z, Runway Protection Zone. Um, we allowed houses to be built in the eighties and early nineties in areas, um, beyond the airport runways that we should not have allowed to be built. FAA is supposed to control those areas, or we as the operator are supposed to control those areas. Uh, the FAA has told us we need to have a planning to start purchasing those homes. Uh, we purchased, in ten years, we've purchased one, I think there's about twenty, somewhere in that range.
Which houses are you talking about?
Um, primarily, they are, um, the ones just north of Twenty-third Street, come on the north end of the.
Yes, and, and how, how far to the east or, uh, from, uh, 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 Apple Lane, how, uh, is it? Uh, do you go how, how far to the east? I mean, how, how wide the area is?
Yeah.
Those are, those are not G thousands.
Those are not.
That's me. That's why I was.
Doesn't it kind of pie shape out a little bit?
It is, yeah, from the end of the, we do have a map. I can have Peter send that out of all the properties and then, and the values of those properties.
So you, what, what this is, is just putting a hundred and fifty in there, and then another hundred and fifty, and then another hundred and fifty. And a hundred and fifty won't even buy a house. I mean, uh, so, I mean.
So the, the intent would be to, if one comes up for sale, is to buy it, as opposed to using other mechanisms to, uh, you know, the federal government just comes down hard on us and says, hey, you have to clear those runway protection zones or you're not getting any more FAA funding. Uh, you know, they would be put in tough spots.
They're not doing that right now.
As of right now.
But that, I mean, what you're saying is they can do that, they told us that, but they're not putting their finger down.
Every time we accept federal grant from, from the FAA, we are saying we are going to, as part of the grant assurances, we are going to control those, those zones. Uh, so they have not come down with, with the hammer yet to tell us we absolutely have to, but, um, this, I feel like is buying us in time. So we don't have to, um, go in and just purchase every house in that zone, but when we have a willing seller, we can just buy them. We've done that once, um, you know, we bought a house building in mid-nineties, early nineties, and, you know, we, we salvaged what we could and then we demolished.
This is one item that typically gets cut every year. Um, like last year, I think we funded a hundred thousand out of the hundred fifty thousand requested. I think part of the thought is that we want to show intent that we're saving money, but if something comes up and we truly want to buy it, we'll find the money, so.
I think we need to continuously show a proactive approach and putting some money in the pot each year. That way we at least have some plausible, hey, we're trying to build this up.
You know, a small aircraft goes down somewhere in, in the country and, and lands on a structure inside the R P Z could be all it takes for the FAA to come down with the hammer on, on everybody.
It would say there'd be a lot of airports.
I think the only ones. This is just kind of proactive approach that hopefully they're, they're not gonna come down on us, that, uh, but like Angela said, it's usually one of the first things that gets cut because it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund cash that just goes into a reserve, basically.
So how do you want us to move forward?
Um, uh, well, first of all, I'd like to know if you have thoughts and if there's things that you want us to try to pay for or things that you think should be pushed. Um, we don't have to definitively make those decisions today, but it would be nice if you had any guidance.
Well, I, I, I think there's some, some initiative to see if there'd be a fifty-fifty split on the Hobart, just to find out if that's worth a discussion. I think there'd be, have discussion, see if this will work.
I, I have a question, and, and I'm, I'm brand new, so this is my first, you know, uh, so, you know, I, I, I understand the numbers, but, but I don't understand the cash flow. All right, so, the, what, what is the, uh, okay, thirty million and this and that, what is the?
Could you give us a quick, uh, revenue neutral lesson on, like our goal for Blaster?
Yes, I mean, that, that's what I'm referring to here. I mean, what, what are we, yeah, we got, we got, we got wages we're raising and there's.
Okay.
This and that and.
Yes, yeah, usually we talk about that when we're talking about the operating budget. So I'll give you like a, a quick.
Well, yeah, that, I mean.
Yes, okay.
That all matters here, I mean, uh.
It, it does, because especially if you want to try to fund like Hobart Deter or something, it may mean raising the mill levy and the bond and interest fund so we can pay that debt. So basically revenue neutral means that, um, we're not gonna raise a single tax dollar more than last year. So if last year we, um, levied the equivalent property tax dollars of thirteen point two million in the general fund, something like that. Um, that means that despite our property tax values raising, maybe they raised fifteen percent, because I've heard some pretty big numbers, um, in other counties this year. If, if the property tax values raise fifteen percent, we're gonna decrease the mill levy. The mill levy is just an expression of the property tax dollars compared to valuation. We're gonna lower the mill levy in order to keep that exact same amount of revenue coming in. And if we don't do the special procedures that, that the state has lined out for us, uh, stating, like, if you're gonna exceed your revenue neutral rate, you have to do these certain procedures. If we don't do those and then our valuation increases before November, we have a new big building built or something like that, that raises our valuation, that, and we don't do those procedures, we're gonna be in violation of that. So they almost always suggest that we go through these procedures, like we're gonna exceed our revenue neutral rate, even if you're not. Um, so, like, what the council needs to decide at some point is, do you want to remain revenue neutral? We'd still go through the procedures? Or do you want to take advantage of some of that, um, property valuation growth? And I don't have those property valuation grow, uh, numbers yet. They're not due from the county until June fifteenth. Usually we have them a few days earlier. Um, and so then we'll see what that would do to our mill levy. If, if property values go up fifteen percent, it could really reduce our mill levy. And so what does that mean to a property tax owner? If your home value did not increase at all, your taxes would actually go down because the mill levy is going down. If your property taxes went up more than average, then, and we still kept revenue neutral, your property taxes would still go up. If they went, um, up less than average, then they would go down. Does that kind of make sense? I don't have all the graphics with me, you know, that.
I, I think, I, I understand what you, I think, I think everybody, we all understand that. So the, uh, 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 we're, this stuff, I mean, we got, we got all the policemen needing money and the firemen needing money and everybody needing money and, 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 uh, uh, so what is the, uh, you know, what, but, but let's just say that we took a stance of revenue neutrality, all right? Which is what, you know, we've, uh, what we're hearing from a lot of people, uh, uh.
So we have, we have two challenges. One is we, we shot for revenue neutral last year. And I, we were, I don't know where we ended up. We were pretty close to revenue neutral or close to it. We had to go through the special procedure because if for some reason we went over, it was gonna be a nightmare.
Oh, yeah, you have to pay back all those tax dollars to the industry.
So even if it's a hundred dollars over.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
But we also had, um, we had projects that we put off.
Yes.
That we said, you know, we could, we could get by another year. It's, it's a weird time. We're fighting inflation, we're fighting.
Yes.
And, but we're also, I think we were somewhat realizing the fact, this is not gonna go away next year, right? So I, there, there's, there's the aspect of just operating costs.
Yes.
Wages.
Yeah, that's what I mean. What, what is, what is all that? I mean, we're, I mean, we need to.
So these are projects and, and, and it's what is important for our community in regards to infrastructure, in regards to amenities, and keeping moving forward. Some of these amenities, um, are, you know, depending on who you talk to, that's, those, those are needed. This is how we attract people, this is how we have young people, and you're gonna get all kinds of different opinions.
Absolutely.
So a lot of these things are projects that were in the works five, six years ago. And it's evolved and it gets put on the back burner or it gets put, brought to the front burner. So where are we at as a council on what we think are items that we need to keep moving forward with, or what items we want to push off or we need to adjust? You know, we talk about breaking out that, that four million dollar one.
I'm with you, I'm with you. I, but, but, but I can't answer that statement until I know about every, all the rest of it. I mean.
This is an informational meeting.
Yes, no, I, but I just mean, I can't answer this question unless I know what, 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 the, the whole budget we, we got, I, 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 I'm.
We'll get to that point, cause next thing is general budget, general fund.
Yeah.
And then we'll see where everybody came in.
I think what she's asking is there, is there a general consensus on anything on here that you're saying, holy cow, we're definitely not spending money on that period, I don't care, this, this, this? Which the department heads got together, they, they basically said, this would be a hard sell, let's, let's keep it simple, let's keep it to the basics. And I think some of the items they listed that they didn't end up funding were just to say, I know this has been a hot topic, this has been something we've been really looking at, but I don't believe you're gonna have an appetite for.
When will we get the other information?
Okay, so that might depend on, um, how we move forward with an interim. Um, I am currently working on the operating budget. I, I just keep working on that while we're waiting for this meeting. So right now, um, I don't think it looks horrible, um, because we've got several things going for us. We've got strong sales tax, we've got strong franchise fees. I think the, but, uh, the department heads were realistic in their operating requests. Um, so I don't think it looks horrible, um, but I've still gotta work through that. And so it depends on like interim, city manager, how we move forward and when, when we want to schedule that next meeting.
And then around June fifteenth, we'll have better information in regards to what kind of tax dollars we're working with.
Well, yeah, and I think that's, those are all really.
The revenue and the cost.
Well, yeah, it has everything to do with what I think about Hobart Deter Field. I mean, I, I think Hobart Deter Field needs to be right and, and all that. And I think it's, you know, I'm, but, and I'm, and fun, but I, I don't, I don't dislike anything I've heard about any of this. But it, it all has to do with, uh, how much, uh, is the rest of the money gonna cost and how much money are we gonna have? And that, that's it for me. I gotta know.
And there could be a middle ground.
In order to be able to say.
In regards, there could be a middle ground in regards to with the increase in property tax values and sales tax and whatnot, where we end up still lowering the mill levy, but we may end up a little bit more than revenue neutral. There could be middle ground there because of inflation. Cause, I mean, we've been fighting, fighting a couple of years of inflation, they haven't, they haven't been very small numbers. But these are things we're still hashing out. This is an introductory to what projects we've been kind of putting on. Who has our, our high priority in some way, shape or form for all the different groups.
So let me ask this then. So if I say, yeah, I'm in favor of this, I may, I not, I may not be in favor of it in, in three weeks. Is, is what you're, and that's okay, you can change your vote and say, okay, no, I retract, I'm, I'm no longer.
If you give me directive.
I just mean, I'm, that's, that's what I mean.
If you give me directive to look at Hobart Deter and how we could try to fund that, I can take that back and try to work it in and, and see what it looks like with our operating budget and with the bond and interest, um, levy. So like, that's the kind of discussion I want here is like, maybe that is something we need to go back and look at and not just completely.
She's describing exactly how we did it last year. I mean, what's important, what's not. I've got some no's here, got some yeses and some question marks. Last year in this meeting, we kind of all, you know, Todd didn't get his parking lot paid. Uh, you know, we, we went through and we, we looked at it, but we can wait to do that if, if people are comfortable.
I, I would, I would like to come to a consensus on some things today.
Personally, I think, personally, my view, we got a lot done today. Even if you come, come sometime this week and I'll take a list, what I think should go, everybody takes a list of what they think they should go, real quick that day, we decide and we give her an answer. I don't know, I have to think about, that's why I'm, I have to think about.
Yeah, and I have several question marks.
And I understand this year is different because you didn't have the information in advance, and I apologize, but trying to do what we could beforehand.
Well, to me, it's all about how much money we have to work with. I, I mean, that is.
Well, and we need to decide how much money we have to work with. Based on.
We do.
What we want to do.
How much time do you have before you're gonna have next round of information for the operating cost?
Um.
Realistically, don't put yourself on the edge.
Probably a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks. So we have a city council meeting in two weeks from today. Do you want, do you think that's enough time? We have a holiday weekend, you need to take some holiday here.
Oh, I will be, um.
Well, you can get on your truck like police chief, yeah?
No. I think a couple of weeks is good, because I think as, I think I've got all the revenues kind of worked through in the operating budget. Um, I do need to go back and double check health insurance, but I, I think it's in a really good place where we could look at it in a couple.
I don't think we have anything real meaty going on as far as the city council meeting that Tuesday morning as of right now.
We're chicken.
We don't. Okay, um, so we could potentially meet after the city council meeting and, and go over the operating budget. If, if, if everyone here feels like they can make that work after the city council meeting in two weeks, instead of leaving and coming back later in the day and just go ahead and stay here and go through it. Do you need anyone else scheduled for that? Or is, is it okay for, I mean, we don't need a very bunch of department heads in here, what do you think? Can't remember how that worked out on the operations side of that.
No, I, I think sometimes they were, especially if they had like staff changes.
Okay, well, let's, cause most people come to the meeting, a lot of department heads come to the meetings.
If they're around, they can zoom in, they're watching anyway.
Right.
It may be that we need to, uh, I mean, clearly we're going to need to, uh, decide what, whether it's, whether it's our intent to try to be revenue, revenue neutral.
I think it's our intent to be fruitful.
It's always the.
I, I just mean, if it is, then, you know, that's, that's a very important number in, in this.
But like you said, let's see the other piece of the pie of the cost.
Yes, yes, yes.
That, that would give us, hold on to these.
Yeah.
That gives us a better, better clarity on what's going on and will prepare us for when we get, uh, June fifteenth comes around. And then we'll be better informed on how this picture's gonna shake out.
Well, then we can take these back and all of us say what goes and what.
Well, and you, you might also have questions that come up and you, hey, I'm gonna call Peter, I'm gonna call Justin, I'm gonna call Todd.
It is, we don't want to put any more pressure on you.
No.
Is that okay if we let this fester for a minute?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have an agreement, uh, yet with the, uh, police department and the, uh, fire department on page, do we not?
No, and that's another piece of.
Um, I mean, that, uh.
But.
Usually he just adjusts.
Okay, okay, all right.
No, would it be easier on you if there were any projects that we just immediately said today, like, yes, this is good, let's take it up? Would that be?
I don't like that myself. I can go back and, I look over this and over and over. Because I might go home and say, if I want to cut this, then I go home, well, maybe I don't want to cut that. I mean, this takes a few minutes to go to.
Would, would we all be a little bit better prepared to think about this?
Yes.
And, and point stuff out if, if it's of concern on that Tuesday?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, just plan on doing that.
Is there any timeline between the ninety-ten and the eighty, eighty-five-fifteen splits? Meaning if you don't fund this year, did that ninety-ten go away for next year potentially funding?
Um, no, not for the airport stuff.
So, like in the airport thing, so if it's a ninety-ten split now, I don't want to, I don't want to potentially miss that opportunity if next year were to be, we're gonna lose that ninety.
Yeah, airport, the FAA stuff's always ninety-ten. There's one exception, which is control towers.
Yeah.
Um, but I think eighty, eighty-five-fifteen splits were, um, you know, ruined the street.
Right, yeah, they were, but, okay, just curious.
Mayor, are you ready to adjourn?
I'm sorry, we need to, we need to pull this apart and take it over to the planning commission meeting if you're ready. Yes.
Are, are we all good to?
Yes.